Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Lofton and I serve as the President of the Parkman Valley School District Board of School Directors. Thank you for everyone who is joining us virtually this evening. I'd like to begin this evening by extending gratitude on behalf of the school board and administration for the community's support as we work through the reality of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our community has been deeply impacted by this public health emergency. And yet, our community is demonstrating our strength and resilience. I would like to start by extending a special thank you to our first line responders and healthcare workers who continue to demonstrate their commitment to serving our community. In addition, so many others have demonstrated their adaptability and resourcefulness as we join together in a variety of supportive efforts to assist others in need and continue the education of our students. On behalf of the Board of Directors, I would like to share that the efforts of all are truly appreciated. The Parkman Valley School District Board of Directors is committed to ensuring the continuity of school board governance and the ability to act on time-sensitive manners in order to continue the necessary work of the school district. Therefore, under current emergency circumstances resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, meetings of the board are being conducted in a virtual format to uphold the order of Governor Wolf for people to stay home except for essential purposes. To determine appropriate governance procedures for a virtual format, the PVSD Board of Directors and Administration have consulted with the district solicitor, Mr. Sugars, other districts in Montgomery County, our local intermediate unit, and the PA Department of Education. Based on input from these entities, Zoom was selected as the most appropriate means available to conduct a virtual meeting of the board. The school board directors, superintendent, board secretary, solicitor, and cabinet administrators are active participants who can speak during the meeting, and up to 500 participants can participate as attendees. In compliance with Board Policy 006.3, the meeting will be recorded to include both audio and video and will be uploaded to Board Docs. Meetings of the board follow Robert's Rules of Order. All normal meeting conduct and practices such as motions, discussion, and voting will be upheld and will be overseen by Mr. Sugars. In order to be clear to attendees during the meeting, meeting participants will state their name when speaking. This will allow our board secretary to accurately record this information in the minutes of the meeting. The public comments portion of Policy 006.2 will be modified while virtual board meetings occur. Public comment is being accepted through two mechanisms, which are advertised on the district's website and noted in Board Docs and listed in the agenda under the public comments section. Comments submitted prior to the meeting could be submitted via email to virtualboardmeeting@pvsd.org. Comments submitted before 5:00 p.m. today are available publicly during this meeting. Comments submitted to this email address after 5:00 p.m. today will be available publicly at the next meeting of the board. During the meeting, members of the public may submit comments through the Q&amp;A feature in Zoom. Public comments must include the name of the individual making the comment and the municipality within which you live or the building to which you are assigned to. The board secretary will receive these comments and make them available to the board and the public. The board acknowledges that this methodology of public comment is unconventional. However, these mechanisms allow for commenting in an orderly and efficient means in compliance with the PA School Code and with Sunshine Law during this emergency situation. They also allow the virtual meeting to proceed in as standard a format as possible. As is standard practice, public comments are not intended to constitute a question-and-answer session with the board. Rather, they offer the public an opportunity to provide input. Therefore, board members will not answer questions in the Q&amp;A feature of Zoom. Board members at their discretion may choose to address these comments from the public during the board comments section at the end of the agenda. Two tests of the Zoom platform were conducted on April 3rd and April 6th by members of the board and administration to assess conductivity and functionality. No business occurred, nor was any action taken during these tests. Additionally, two executive sessions were conducted virtually. The first occurred on March 17th for the purposes of safety and personnel, and the second occurred on March 24th for the purpose of personnel. On an additional note, the majority of committee meetings were canceled during the month of March. Select committee meetings will occur during the month of April in a virtual format. Details are forthcoming and will be communicated by the respective committee chairpersons or superintendent. Noncritical committee meetings will continue to be temporarily suspended as the district awaits further direction on mandated closures and best practices for mitigating the spread of coronavirus. District residents are encouraged to continue to reach out to administration, the superintendent, and/or board members with any questions or concerns. Email addresses for school board members are listed under the School Board tab on the PVSD website. We will make every effort to answer questions and address your concerns in a timely manner. Thank you. We will now move on to the agenda. We'll start with Section 1.01, the call to order. I'm calling this meeting to order for this evening. Section 1.02 is the roll call. Mrs. Weiner, could you please lead us through the roll call?
Mr. Dorr.
Present.
This is Evans Brockett.
Here.
Dr. Hollis.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Here.
This is Lofton.
Here.
This is Mares.
Here.
This is Roberts.
This is Roberts.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you. All present.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiner. We will now move on to Section 1.03, the approval of the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So. Second.
Second, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda.
Mrs. Lofton, may I make a suggestion? When a board member makes a motion or seconds the motion, could they also announce their name for the record?
That sounds like an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Section 1.04. There is a request for approval to modify application of Board Policies 006.1, attendance at board meetings via electronic communications, and 006.2 meeting agendas. And may I have a motion?
Show moved by Matthew Dorr.
Second, Jean Hollis.
Are there any questions regarding this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us on to Section 1.05, comments on any topic. We have received three comments prior to the meeting that I will share. The first one is from Sean Hollenbach from Skippack Township. The comment reads, "We have sons JPV High School Grade 10 and Dean PV West Middle School Grade 6. One of my main concerns on moving forward is with the overcrowding on the school buses. What plans will be put in place when hopefully all of the COVID-19 stuff goes away? I know this is a difficult time for everyone right now, and we appreciate everything that PV School District has been doing so far. Thank you all for your commitment to our children's safety and hard work at trying to get through this difficult time." The next comment is from Todd Shine in Lower Frederick. "Thank you for continuing through this trying time. With most construction being tagged as nonessential by the state, is the start of the 2020 school year still a feasible target for completion of either stadium?" And the third comment from Julian Scavetti in Schwanxville Borough reads, "My sons attended Schwanxville Elementary and PV Middle School West. The PV virtual classroom is untenable and creating an unhealthy environment in the home. We, my wife, and both our sons receive a massive amount of emails from teachers, and these include many assignments for my sons to complete each day. There is no clear and easy path to accomplish the work because the public school system is not set up to be a virtual school, nor are the students prepared to do online schooling. There is difficulty navigating the applications used by the teachers with the assignments, and there is a great challenge trying to figure out the teachers' expectations with the assignments. We would like the option to create our own curriculum and assignments for our kids as this would eliminate the many issues we are facing with the current system and create a healthy quarantine environment. Lastly, we as parents spend over five hours a day on the current schoolwork. This time is tense and stressful with our kids on top of working from home, preparing for meals a day, and maintaining our home." So thank you to the three individuals who submitted their comments prior to the meeting, and again, anyone who is participating in the Zoom platform can submit comments through the Q&amp;A feature, and we will address those at the end of the meeting. We'll now move on to Section 2 on reports, and I'm going to turn it over to our two student members of the board, Mr. Marks and Ms. McGovern.
Thank you. Um. Sam, do you have anything to report? Sorry, I can't hear that well.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, perfect. So, um, I do have a few things just to update about the student body. This is Maggie McGovern for the record, by the way. So, one, students have been handling this kind of as best as they can, just as the teachers and administration. A lot of our clubs, like Key Club and the PV Youth Activist Group, it's not an official club, but have been working on sending thank you notes to the local hospitals and perhaps making signs for the front lawns and just working on ways to help the community, even virtually or at home. Many students are missing out on activities and events they were a part of, like the musical, the spring sports, and many students are worried about graduation and prom, which I'm sure is no surprise to anyone on the board. But I think the best thing to do, and what I'm gathering from most of, I guess, the group of people I talked to, is that most students would rather have these events postponed until it is safe, rather than completely canceled. But obviously, that can be confirmed with like a student-wide survey or something like that. I just wanted to throw that option out there that I think most students would appreciate that. And third, everyone has been impacted by this situation. Obviously, it's no secret. Parents, staff, administration, students, the entire community. Some parents and students are working on the front lines, have lost their job, are worried about their elderly family members. There's an infinite number of situations that parents could be facing at this time that affects students too. And students could be and are facing an infinite number of situations too, whether they are working on the front lines, dealing with family concerns, taking care of younger siblings or older relatives, struggling with a physical or mental illness. Like I said, an infinite amount. With some of these things, prioritizing schoolwork becomes really difficult. I think teachers and administration need to focus on flexibility with students, not that they haven't already, but flexibility with tests, assignments, attendance, grades, just as students must be flexible with the administration and the teachers as they do the best they can. The way we have been handling it so far, in my opinion, is a great start. I just think focusing on flexibility within reason might help more of the community. I think students really just want clear communication right now and for the administration to be as transparent as possible so that they can voice their concerns and be heard and vice versa. Personally, I've talked with my family and friends, and I think there are two things that could really benefit the entire community. And the first would be an optional weekly Google form survey about how kids are doing, what the workload was like this week, what they could see as improvements, how their families are doing, do they have any comments, et cetera. And two, a place where they could ask important questions or raise concerns anonymously. At the high school level, I believe they're trying something like this with some of the counselors, and I think that's a great start, too. These kinds of forms, in my opinion, and as a student, I think where students can directly communicate their concerns with the school would really help us know and identify the patterns of how we need to tailor our virtual voyage to meet every student's situation. I mean, obviously, that's nearly impossible to do, but I'm sure that there are patterns that would arise, that would show us, hey, maybe we can ease up on this situation here or there. I would be glad to help with any further discussions about what those surveys look like in depth, too. Obviously, I don't want to put any more pressure on the PV administration staff because these are unknown times and all we can do is our best, but it is the responsibility of the school to be there for students as much as we can be, especially in regards to mental health during this scary time. With all of that said, with something as unknown and up in the air as the COVID-19 situation, I think the whole of the student body needs to be heard, and that I cannot possibly represent all of their voices collectively. So I guess my report is really a request for the board and the administration to reach out to the student body to maybe implement or discuss some of those forums and plans and overall accommodate our community's virtual voyage within reason to all of our needs because the only way we get through this is together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGovern. I appreciate everything that you've shared with us this evening. It's certainly very timely and important for us to hear all of that feedback. Most of what I had to say, I shared in my president's report, but I do have one bright note that I would like to share. I'm sorry, I shared in my opening comment before the president's report. I just wanted to share that today, the PVSD received an award from the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association. We received an Award of Excellence for the MLK Day Day of Service. And this was from the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association Communication Contest, and all the work that was done was awarded to us. We are an Award of Excellence winner out of 230 entries. So congratulations to everyone who was involved in this event of service to the community. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Russell for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. And for this month's report, I would like to touch upon the COVID-19 pandemic and some of the things, some of the responses that the school district is taking to support our families and our students, and some of the supports that have been offered to us. I'd also like to talk a little bit about some recent legislative changes that have happened at the state level under Act 13, and how that impacts the school district and what's happening for our students and staff. We'll talk a little bit about the calendar and those questions around graduation. So first and foremost, I'd like to extend my wishes for all to be healthy and safe in your homes these days. These are unprecedented times, very challenging to navigate. However, I hope that you're finding ways to be comfortable staying at home and avoid leaving and interacting with others. When you do, I hope that you're practicing social distancing, and those steps that we know mitigate the spread of disease. Under these circumstances, the school district has attempted to reach out to families in ways that can be supportive. Number one is through food provisions. There have been grab-and-go food opportunities for families in our district, across the district, at the high school and Schwanxville bus circles, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings from 9:00 to 11:00. There are no questions asked. If you have children that attend our schools and would benefit from meals for your children, please come by any Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. This week is an exception to Friday due to the holiday. Our food service staff will be offering meals Monday and Wednesday this week, and then back on track Monday, Wednesday, Friday next week. And along with our food service personnel, we have our volunteer PV Power Packs individuals offering supplemental meals and snacks to families. You can pick up a bag in a grab-and-go format when you come by to pick up meals through food service. We are very appreciative of the generosity of the volunteers and the workers in our food service department who come out each of these days to offer meals to our families. As a school district, we've had some initiation to make donations to our medical community and those that are really working in the thick of COVID-19 and coronavirus by sharing masks, gloves, and goggles that we have available. And I want to thank Mrs. Evans Brockett and Mrs. Lofton for initiating the opportunity for the school district to contribute in these ways. We have lots of community members who are serving in the health field and supporting those within our community that become ill, and we thank you for that. And hopefully, the items that we've donated, they're small in number and hopefully serve effectively. Additionally, we've actually had one of our high school teachers, Mr. Andrew Colvin, manufacture some masks, more sophisticated masks, using a 3D printer from the high school. He and Mr. Karthik Ganesh, our Chief Information Officer, worked on a design and provided examples of masks that could be produced and manufactured using a 3D printer from the high school to a physician at Phoenixville Hospital. And I know that in response to some social media posts about these masks, there were lots of other offers, individuals willing to do the same and support our medical community and the personnel who are really in the thick of this virus and treating people who are ill. Finally, I want to give a shout out to the foundation, our Education Foundation. They generously donated $30,000 to pay for 100 Chromebooks, which we in turn will donate or lend to our elementary families who don't have a resource or device at home for their elementary students and would benefit from this resource during our virtual school. So thank you to the Parkyomen Valley Education Foundation, and they continue to be generous to our school district and support what happens for our students here. So Act 13 is new legislation. It was signed into law on Friday, March 27th. And really, what it did, the governor has assisted school districts in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic and the stay-at-home mandated school closures and what comes with that. So a couple of highlights around this legislation. The 180-day requirement that is standard for school districts across the Commonwealth has been waived. So we had two weeks there where we were first closed down, and we were offering enhancements of the learning our students had realized this year. We've since shifted to new learning. None of those days off, none of the days off as we continue forward, will be held against us, nor are we required to make them up. The assessments that our students participate in typically during this time of year, PSSA's keystones have been canceled. AP exams will be administered at home on an online platform. And then there will be some adjustments in response to the lack of those data this year in terms of our school performance profile score that typically comes in in the upcoming fall and our teacher evaluation process. More to come on that. I mentioned that we started with that first two weeks of school closures by enhancing our students' learning. We have since shifted to a continuity of education or new learning, and that's been an adjustment for all of us. You heard Maggie share some comments from the perspective of a high school student. You heard Mrs. Lofton mention some comments from the perspective of a family of an elementary and middle school students. We continue to hear these comments and work with our families and our staff on striking the balance that works for our community in supporting our students being engaged with us and participating in some meaningful learning experiences. And we're working to continually improve the service that we're offering. Asynchronous means that there's a lot of work that's done independent on the part of the students. There's not necessarily a formal schedule that they follow, like they would if we were attending school in the buildings. Synchronous means that a teacher has scheduled a meeting, a video conference, to maybe hold a classroom meeting, a morning meeting, or to explain something our students are learning. So more of that to come, and hopefully, you're learning a lot about your children's experiences through your teachers. I will be updating the community with another Facebook Live presentation or livestream presentation conversation on April 15th. That will be two weeks out from the one of last week. And at that point, we'll update you on what's happening with teaching and learning and what we've learned from the Centers for Disease Control, from the State Department of Health, or the County Department of Health. We'll keep you updated. Additionally, some other highlights of Act 13. Our staff will continue to be paid, and many are working. We have some things to work out with contractors that serve the school district. So in addition to some of the aspects of Act 13 that help us to understand what needs to happen for students, what can happen for students, there are also aspects of that legislation that speak to how we work and operate as an organization under these conditions. And if you have any questions, I've put a link in here to the FAQs on the Pennsylvania Department of Ed's website, and that should answer some of the questions, and we'll give you some more information about the highlights that I've called out. Our calendar is one where currently I am not recommending to the board that we make any changes to or extend the year in response to the mandated closures. Again, the state is waiving the requirement of the 180 days. One adjustment that needs to be made because of the shift in the primary from April 28th to June 2nd, we are recommending a shift in that in-service day to later in the school year. So that would become a school day for our students and staff. If they need to meet the requirement of that flex day, would do it at the end of the year. And the dates have been laid out. We have used one of our inclement weather days, or not necessarily an inclement weather day, but a pandemic day on March 11th. We have three days built into our calendar, so we will move the calendar back at this point, two days. And you can see laid out on this slide, the last student day is June 9th. Graduation is currently scheduled for June 5th. And let's talk about graduation. Lots of questions about graduation. That ceremony that's held for our students is one that's well-respected and looked forward to on the part of our students and our families. Right now, we're considering that. However, we don't want to do anything that would put anyone in an unsafe set of circumstances, and we'll look for guidance around that from the County Health Department. In the event, we are unable to hold the graduation ceremony as we know it on June 5th. We are looking into a virtual ceremony. There are some pretty neat virtual ceremonies that are being developed by other school organizations. And Dr. Moss and some individuals from the high school are looking at those carefully and considering what might be possible for Parkyomen Valley if that's the path we take. Also, we're looking at postponing the graduation ceremony and considering it taking place in the summer. So more to come on that as we learn more about what might be possible time-wise based upon this pandemic and what happens next. Thank you, Mrs. Lofton.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. I appreciate the report. Moving on to the next section of the agenda is the Solicitors Report, Section 2.04. Mr. Sugars, do you have a report for us this evening?
No, just to reiterate to the board, to the public, that the... There's various guidance being issued almost on a daily basis regarding Act 13 and various federal legislation that has been adopted pursuant to this current pandemic. There's the Families First Coronavirus Response Acts. There's the CARES Act. There's the Payroll Protection Act. The United States Department of Education, the United States Department of Labor, the Pennsylvania Department of Education are issuing guidance regularly. We're working with several statewide associations, including PASBO, PSBA. We're working with the Pennsylvania State Education Association to stay on top of the latest guidance and try to reach consensus with respect to the current state of the law. But it's a very fluid situation, and things are changing every day. And a lot of the questions are fact-specific, and we need to deal with them on an ongoing basis. So I just wanted to assure the board that we're working hard at staying on top of all the recent developments, and we're working closely with your district administration in that regard. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sugars. The next section of the agenda is Section 2.05. As I mentioned in the opening statement, most of our committee meetings were canceled during the month of March. We are tentatively going to... We are tentatively going to hold some committee meetings virtually during the month of April with the dates that are listed here. So, you're not, but because of the past cancellations, you're not seeing attachments of meeting minutes from the past month in this agenda item. Except for there was the MCIU committee meeting minutes are attached here for anybody who wishes to review those. And that brings us on now to Section 3.
Mrs. Lofton, can I make a quick committee report? This is Rena Kohler.
Oh, yes, please do.
Just wanted to point out that the PV Foundation, the grant deadline has been extended to April 14, given that the original deadline was over the time of our closure. So, anybody who's interested in applying can find details on the foundation website. And the application process is through email. And then, we did not have a meeting, but we did take a vote through email, as you heard in Dr. Russell's report, to approve the donation for the Chromebooks.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Kohler. Does anyone else have anything to add on to the committee reports? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda. Section 3.01, items that represent standard routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have any items removed for discussion. Consent items as of April 6, 2020 are listed below. Additional agenda items may be added to the consent agenda during the work session meeting. The following items will be added to the consent agenda for approval at the April 13, 2020 business meeting. 7.01, 7.02, 7.03, 8.01, 8.02, and 8.03. And that brings us to Section 4 on education, and I will turn it over to Dr. Kohler.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton, for Item 4.01. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Smith for an education update.
Good evening, everyone. This evening's education update will include some information about our virtual voyage and specifically Chromebook distributions to our community and families, some thoughts we have regarding summer programming as well as graduation projects, and then just a bit of an update on where we are at with our elementary specials. So, our virtual voyage, you've heard the term continuity of education used already this evening, and that is the term that the state is using for educational practices that are occurring during our closure with, you know, being important for our students to have an opportunity to maintain and develop the skills while they're away from their customary school environment. And our first two weeks, as was mentioned earlier, were really enrichment and review, reinforcing and extending the skills that our students had already learned. And since March 30, we have moved into what the state is calling planned instruction or new learning, formal teaching and learning similar to the classroom, but in a virtual environment. So, we have just entered our second week of that. We have developed both student and staff schedules to help to provide some structure and guidance to our families to help them chunk the work that may be coming into their homes. Each week, we have shared weekly expectations for our staff in terms of what's expected of them regarding communication as well as the work that they are sharing with their students. And they've spent a lot of time developing learning activities that they rolled out this week. We've also focused on providing some professional development. In one of our initial weeks, we were able to work with mission kids to provide trauma-informed approaches training, which is a state requirement. And this time allowed us to have all staff members participate in that. And we have been doing several voluntary professional development opportunities offered by our tech integration specialists, things like Google Classroom, Google Hangout Meets, WeVideo, Flipgrid, different tools that we are using much more heavily than we were prior to the closure and to help our staff feel comfortable with that. We've also instituted staff collaborations where every Tuesday, teachers come together virtually by either grade level or department. And they really focus on identifying the essential learning targets between now and the end of the year. What learning is most important for our students? What do we want them to be able to know and be able to do? And then they are chunking them by week. So, each week, they'll identify the target for the upcoming week, and then they will collaborate and brainstorm on what might be the best practices or strategies to use in this virtual environment with their students, and then create those activities to share. So, we're trying to get into a cycle of that collaboration, and it's really providing some great sharing opportunities for our staff. We are continually monitoring and adjusting, taking feedback and making, you know, minor changes here, working on some of the details, and responding to the situation as it evolves. We have been working on an attendance plan. And for right now, attendance to us really means that we are making a connection with our students. So, our first week was really all about trying to make sure that all students have access to the learning, they have a device, they're able to sign in, able to check in in some way with their teachers throughout last week. We continue to work on what attendance will look like in the future. And I expect that when we return from break, it'll probably look a little bit different than it did the first week. We also continue to investigate grading and learn from what our districts across the county are doing in terms of how they are adjusting. And honestly, everybody is making their own unique decisions that work for their community. So, more to come on grading. We are ending our third marking period shortly here around the break and with grades due and report cards coming out the end of the month. We've been mainly focusing on asynchronous learning or recorded videos, things that students can kind of pace at their own and what works for them. You heard the word earlier from Maggie about being flexible. We do have many synchronous learning activities also occurring across the district at the various levels, as you heard Dr. Russell mention, morning meetings or a learning opportunity for kids or a Google Hangout to check in. We are considering how to maybe move more in that direction in the future and having those ongoing discussions. And then you can see some of the remaining bullets are the expectations that we have of our staff each week, which is holding office hours, obviously maintaining our compliance with IEPs, GIEPs, and 504, so holding lots of virtual meetings. They do attend a faculty meeting every Monday where they get updates on building things as well as district protocols. And then we've also been working on specific employee groups and what they can be doing, like our secretarial group, our maintenance custodial food service, some of those particular groups and how they can be supporting us in this time as well. Mr. Ganesh's department has been working on the Chromebooks. You know that in 6 to 12, we are one-to-one, but we have been really trying to support our elementary students. There were three scheduled distributions so far to date at which we had, as you can see, 836 students and 43 staff members able to receive a device. And we've had two scheduled opportunities for tech support, kind of the drive-by tech support that they've been able to facilitate. You also heard we had the foundation grant where we ordered about 100 more devices, which we hope to receive this week. And once they are ready to go, we will get a distribution plan together for another drive-through opportunity. And Mr. Ganesh's team continues to offer ongoing tech support through a help desk. They've held Zoom sessions with families to provide tech support and are using some, you know, different calendly, I hope I said that right, to be able to schedule appointments for families, as well as some FAQs and some basics are posted on our website. This slide, we are considering several summer programming options for our students. And some of them you are familiar with. We've had ESY in the past that's required by IDEA and funded by the district. It supports our special education students. And we are considering expanding that program this year, trying to figure out if we provide additional services to our students, might that help with some of the instruction. LIFT, you're familiar with as a Title I program that we have offered the past two summers to support South Shwinxville and West students. Again, we are considering possibly expanding that this summer to include either more time or more students. And again, that is funded by Title I. The two opportunities on the right then is we would like to be able to provide some additional summer programming to our students who are not necessarily special education or Title I, but students who we may target as needing some additional support or some enrichment opportunities for our students to receive some of that hands-on that they may be missing now or additional instruction in particular areas. So, we're investigating something in the K-5 realm as well as possibly in the 6 to 12 realm for both of those two areas. And more to come on that as we learn more about if we're able to access our buildings as well as what programming we may be able to use. I believe graduation projects is next. That is something here at PV that we are very proud of and something that we've maintained even though the state no longer requires it. And so, we would like to maintain the grad project this year. We have over 300 students who have already completed that in our senior class and about 165 that are incomplete. Our counselors and social worker at the high school have already started to contact those students and talk to them about potential options for virtual presentations or other ideas that they may have. And we are also working on developing staff panels to sit and view those presentations and provide feedback to our students. So, something that we are working on and hope to be able to bring to fruition for our students as they've worked really hard on this. And lastly, you know, I was so proud each month to say to you, we are on track with elementary specials. And I have to say to you that we did get thrown a little bit off track here. We had hoped to be bringing to you in April some additional options based upon our last meetings and your feedback. The closure did derail our opportunity to meet and really get those details together. We are meeting with the elementary principals later this week before the holiday and hope to have to use some additional options possibly for next Monday, if we can pull that off and have that together for you, but options that would provide programming in all seven of the special areas and what that might look like. Any questions for myself or even for Mr. Ganesh on the tech side of things? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Item 4.02 is the enrollment report, which will be presented next week on April 13. So, that concludes my section.
Thank you, Dr. Kohler. We'll now move on to Section 5 on business. Mr. Dorr.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Section 5.01, the finance update. I'll turn it over to Mr. Weaver.
Thank you all. I hope everybody is safe and well. I don't have a lot of good information to provide tonight from an economic standpoint, but we'll get it out there and we'll start chewing it up as good as we can. We have a quick update on the impact of the coronavirus and both on our current year projections and on next year's budget and perpetuity. Then we'll talk about some state findings that the state came through and completed about a six-month audit. So, these findings are in particular to our transportation. They also audited our safety, which came through with flying colors. So, that's a positive. We'll hit that. Capital projects, we'll kind of try to summarize where we're at with the ESCO 3.0 project, Part 2, specific to South. There are the athletic field upgrades, as was one of our questions that Mrs. Lofton read in the beginning, and some other general district improvements that we were attempting to move forward with and had a very well-structured, laid-out financial plan and program to address all three of these issues. And then we'll summarize with a couple of other, last other items, Q and A, if you should have any. So, immediately, we'll move forward with the impact of the COVID-19 on this current year, and we've kind of chunked this information. And then we'll also go through the projected budgets for 2021. However, when we look at this stuff, we kind of look at where we've been before and try to come up with some sort of a plan to address what is happening on our end from an economic standpoint versus what happened, for instance, in '07, '08, and '08, '09. And so, what we've done is we've broken out a couple of quick items here so that you can see the amount of detail and information that goes into these items. And so, we're working our way through this with, as Mr. Subers had said, a lot of attention to detail and guidance from those professional organizations and our legal team as well, to make sure that we know how to interpret it. But if we look back to '07, '08 and compare those numbers, how they carried forward through for 2018 audited years, you can see where focusing in on this particular slide, which is the local revenues. Remember, we have local revenues, state revenues, and then we have federal revenues. Local revenues make up 80% of our revenues budget. So, this is very important for us to look at this. Try to find out if we can find any trends whatsoever that we might apply from back then, almost 13 years ago, to the current economic situation. Focusing in on 2011, you can see there that our actual local revenues were declined compared to the prior year. And essentially, that is, from our perspective, the time that it took when the economy depressed in '08, '09, and we entered into that nasty recession. It actually took us, in Perkyomen Valley, several years worth, several fiscal years, until we fully felt the impact of that recession. Main point of that is that we have, our taxpayers pay their bills. They pay their bills on time. Even in economic struggles, they continue to pay their bills. So, that over time was a positive for us until it finally caught up to us in 2011. Part of that is also conservative budgeting as well. So, from that, we take, well, now the next step is to look at what really caused that. And so, we're currently going through, looking at the individual line items that of course make up those local revenues. So, for instance, real estate taxes, we know were pretty consistent and steady. The assessments for those real estate taxes were pretty consistent and steady. And we're focusing in on what we're considering alternative revenues. Those are alternative revenues, things like the interest earnings on our fund balances and monies in the bank. Real estate transfer taxes, because real estate transfer taxes are part and parcel of a strong economy because people purchase and sell parcels of land and real estate that we gain the benefit of. When the economy slows down, people tend not to purchase those areas or those items, that additional revenue source then dries up and goes away. So, those are just some areas that we continue to look at and focus. And that's what we take out of this slide to initially begin our process. We continue to drive down. Obviously, each one of these years has a significant story to tell. We have all the data that Amy and I continue to look forward to and glean and get some additional information out there. But right now, remember, these are looking like, and I'm sure the professionals would agree to a certain extent, these are two totally different things. We actually have an economy that was stopped dead in its tracks. If you look at what started and what happened in '07, '08, the subprime mortgages were specifically responsible for that. And the industry that it was structured upon kind of fell apart on itself. However, remember, we still did have, restaurants were open. We still did have most of our shopping, so sales tax continued to be strong, those types of areas. And Perkyomen Valley, once again, may have been unique to other school districts, but we did not see the unemployment that they are predicting, anywhere near the unemployment that they are predicting associated with this. We were nowhere near a 10% unemployment, let alone what they're projecting at 20% to 30%. Whether or not we get there, we don't know, but it's a start for us to try to assemble this picture that we're trying to build. So, if you move on to the next slide, we look at state revenues. So, you can see state revenues were fairly consistent until about 2010. And here's where the state impact of the economy and the recession hit the state as far as their budgeting goes. They kind of ran out of money. So, what do they do when they run out of money? They just say, okay, you know what? We can't afford to give you what we promised to give you as part and parcel of the subsidies. So, your equalized subsidy payment, your special education payment, your transportation payment. By and large, they have the ability to stop and reduce those. Also, another piece of this is the federal impact, which is tiny for Perkyomen Valley typically at $500,000. However, remember, there was a huge stimulus package from the federal government through the Obama administration that reached back out to states, and those states, like Pennsylvania, then fostered those stimulus dollars out. As a comparison, in one of the webinars that we had today with Mr. Sultanic and Forecast 5, the stimulus that was provided in the federal down through the state in 2010 was about $400 million. You can see here where the federal revenues ramped up over three years, and then they dropped off. That's where the stimulus ended. And then hopefully, at that point in time, the local revenues and the state revenues revenues would pick that up. We all recall the arguments with the Corbett administration about the missing $1 billion of educational money. Those are things that the stimulus helped to prop up. The state had that one-time money that was provided by Governor Rendell on his way out. That finally ran out. The federal stimulus money filled in that gap for a couple of years, and then it dropped off. So we are curious as to how those stimulus programs will impact us moving forward. Mr. Sultanic, in his quick review of what Act 13 provides and in comparison to what the $2.2 trillion federal stimulus is providing, indicates that the federal stimulus has less now or that may be used for state educational purposes for Pennsylvania than what was provided 13 years ago. So it is one of the areas that we're looking at. Does that mean that there won't be another federal stimulus that might be able to come in and and help us or even save the state? Because in our professional opinion right now, again, we need to continue to research this, the state is in far worse condition than it was back in 2007, 2008. So we're in this for the long haul. As we look at some of these data points for us, we will continue to glean these points and to try to find out if we can identify what happened 10, 10, 15 years ago and how we eventually worked our way out of it. Although we freely admit, these are two totally separate animals. And so we need to come up with some sort of a solution moving forward. And we'll continue to update this. But again, our professional organizations are telling us that this will be deeper, it will be nastier, and it will take us longer time for us to get back to where we are from March, beginning of March. So that's that's what I've got to report on that. We'll continue to update you as our professional organizations continue to provide more information to think of it. So when we look at how does this virus impact us right now in our current state? Remember, we are 8/12 of the fiscal year through. We finished through February, we entered into March. March was relatively unharmed to a certain point in time. And so we continue to look at these alternative revenue sources. Earned income taxes have been strong. The board note is fully aware of the complex that I have with earned income tax and the fact that we track it on a daily and monthly, weekly and monthly basis. Those those EIT monies were strong. They help us to meet our overall budget numbers. Real estate transfer taxes, I talked about that. Also, interest earnings, interest earnings. Overnight, it seems like when the pandemic was officially issued, the investments that we can invest in, the limited investments that we have, went instantaneously overnight from a 1.7 or a 1.6 earned percentage point, immediately down to a 0.10. Those interest earnings basically disappeared overnight. Now, the good thing is we've got almost 8/12, so almost three quarters of the year in. So we are well along our way to meet, to making our budget in our budget number for interest earnings. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to make that. So we were on track to exceed that. We were on track to forward that for 2021. But yet, we're going to have to put the brakes on that. This particular virus also impacts soft revenues, activity fees, rental fees, community education programs. These are have all been impacted by social distancing and the things that we need to do to defeat this virus. We did not have to do that back back in the recession of 07, 08, 08, 09. Ultimately, what are the impacts on state and federal subsidies? Will the state be able to because their, oh, their sales taxes, they've stopped being collected basically because nobody's going out, nobody's buying. The gambling monies that were just starting in 07, 08, those have basically dried up at this point in time moving forward as well. Remember, that's a twofold. That basically goes into the coffers of the state. We get that that funds future subsidies perhaps, but also it provides the tax relief dollars to a certain extent that we also count on and rely upon. And of course, the federal subsidies, we are about $700,000 out of a $112 million budget for federal subsidies. But what might be coming along the way or change the current federal subsidies that we don't know about that they're currently creating at the federal level to pass through the state? So the good thing is is that we collected our biggest line item, which is our real estate taxes. That that program effectively ends in December. The board is well aware in our treasures reports that we came up a little short on our revenue projection. We're at about 99.8%. And that is due essentially to a couple of large assessment appeals that went through. And, you know, we increased the the real estate tax collection rate. So again, it's all strong from a real estate tax perspective. But, you know, we've got to be careful how we project that moving forward, our assessments. We've been hearing that in times of tough economic times, people will assess or appeal their assessment. So we're looking for, looking at that and what impact that may have. And of course, we may have to revisit our tax collection rate simply because of the fact that if it is as dire as what people are predicting, people will have a harder and harder time to continue to pay their bills. So if we move forward, one of the areas that we're looking at, Amy and I, Amy did a great job with this of bringing forward to help us understand what kind of a break that puts on for our revenues projected in these focus areas, these alternative revenue and soft revenue areas. So you can see the total revenues collected for March 18 through June 18 and also March 19 through June 19. And now compared to our estimate, what we're saying from March 2020 through June 2020. But you can see the activity fees, the refunds, the refunds, they all go back out. Community education stops, so we cease getting any revenue for those. The earned income taxes, you can see when the economy is strong, those taxes do also include the 60-day rule for July and August. And they typically are delayed a little bit in their response. So we do think at about 66 or 67%, that's that's what our estimate is right now for collection moving forward in March to June for the earned income tax. Same focus on real estate transfer tax. There are, this is typically about two months delayed. So properties that were purchased in January and February, those items get processed in March. And then in March, late March and April, we do get our fair share of the real estate transfer tax, maybe even into May, depending upon the settlement date. Now, we're hopeful that that will continue, but that shows you what the real estate transfer tax, you know, on that. Delinquent real estate and delinquent personal taxes. We're happy when those delinquent real estate taxes and delinquent personal taxes aren't as high. Unfortunately, we do see, we do have some delinquent on a $67 million assessment lien for property taxes. But again, those are slightly delayed for a couple of months. We do have alternative firms that collect those for us, delinquent real estate taxes in Portnoy, delinquent personnel taxes through Berchheimer Associates. And we still are receiving those, but again, sometimes those take two months until they're they are fully through. So you can see we're estimating that comparing the last two quarters, so to speak, for revenue, the past fiscal years, we're showing that will be down about a third, about almost $2.7 million in that. Again, and those are just the focus areas that we're very concerned with moving forward. On the expenditure side for 1920, well, you know, salaries and benefits, we continue to pay our staff. That was previously mentioned in Mrs. Smith's update. We continue to take direction as as been provided by the state and their guidance, as Dr. Russell mentioned as well. But these are a couple of areas that we're we're curious about. Remember, we are self-funded, for instance, for insurance. So we're looking at those. If people don't come to work, does that mean they're safer? So they have less accidents? I mean, these are the types of things that we're actually looking at. And perhaps there could be some sort of a trend that may that might be able to have us have some savings that we hadn't been counting on. Contractors, that's open to debate. We continue to talk about those and, you know, what's essential, what is not. Overall operational savings, we continue to look at that from a different way of, are we doing school in a different way? We know that, well, we have to look at operationally doing school at a different level. Well, we need to purchase some something else that we're currently looking at, that we didn't think we'd be at to help facilitate the continuity of learning. So we're, we've got a whole bunch of things that we're balancing here from an expenditure standpoint. And we haven't really said that these are savings. But Dr. Russell, if you would go to the next slide, that'll tell you where, thank you. That'll tell you some areas that we're looking at as far as expenditure savings that we're looking at. To give you an idea, so for instance, STA, we have no no spring sports. We have, we don't have to worry about AIDS on buses, and we don't have to worry about daily bus runs. However, we're very cognizant of the fact that Act 13 has information in there specific to transportation, transportation contracts. We are taking guidance on that. We don't know about that, but yet we're showing you the amount and the dollars associated with that that could be. We go through the these particular items. We even look at PICO, direct energy and UGI, electric natural gas savings, just basically because Mr. Clemmer is operationally reducing the temperatures when he heats and letting the temperatures go up a little bit when he cools. On nights when it gets cold and it warms up during the day, that presents a problem for us as we continue to maintain the cleanliness of our buildings and avoid anything that might hurt harm our buildings moving forward. As our buildings are completely enclosed, and as we know, we've got to be very careful with the environment that we create on our own. So when we look at operational savings and drill down into heating, which is oil and natural gas, diesel, gasoline, those types of things, we look at some of the areas that could have additional savings for us from not simply not having operations. Dr. Russell, if you could move forward. So these are the areas that we're looking at, again, drilling down a little bit further. Disposal services, we have talked to our disposal services contract through the MCIU to see if they could stop pickup. We feel that they they will do that or rearrange the pickup to have less pickups in general because we have less people and less garbage. Water and sewer, for instance, less people in the buildings, less use for that. Repairs and maintenance, that's a catchy one. Because when we're going through or not entering our buildings, we are lacking out on PMs, preventive and maintenance programs that we need to keep up on. And depending upon if we have the staff in there to do it, that may or may not be savings. Natural gas, electricity, same thing. In fuel oil, we are looking at, we have firm commitments with our fuel through the MCIU procurement. We are working with our our procurement contractor, the successful vendor through the MCIU, to see if we can work out some details. They have some offers for us to consider, and we've looked at those. And what we feel we're going to do is we're going to be able to, because we have a firm commitment of gallons. Unfortunately, we're not, we're only three quarters of the way through our our busing year. So we have about 35,000 gallons of diesel gas that we are being, we are working on shifting into next year's budget and actually getting a bit of a better rate because of the market. So we are looking and working with our vendor for that to avoid something because we have to take those gallons. If we don't take those gallons, we have to pay for them and we lose them forever. So we cannot do that, and they've been lucky enough to work with us in the MCIU to avoid that additional cost. Okay, any questions on the impact for 1920? I know it's kind of, there's a lot of information there, and we continue to work on that. So moving forward into 2021, well, you know,
Mr. Weaver?
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One of the things that I've been hearing on the television is that there are a number of governors that are diverting funds that would normally be allocated for school systems and sending them over to the hospital systems, the medical systems. Are you hearing anything like that in Pennsylvania?
Mrs. Roberts, I have not. Now, that might, that's probably a better question for either Dr. Russell or Mr. Subers with their connections.
Act 13 guarantees, this is Brian Subers, Act 13 guarantees that we'll receive the same level, same state subsidies as if the pandemic never occurred. So it won't affect our state subsidies.
Okay, thanks.
And to that point, remember, Act 13 runs out at the end of the school fiscal year. So all bets are off for next year. But for this year, we will be made whole. Okay, so that's a good question. So moving forward to 2021 budget and beyond, again, the revenues we're still considering to look at. Everything that we presented up to this point in time was very smooth, very procedural and mandated in states and states to keep everything common, composed, and moving forward with the known facts of the data associated with both revenues and expenditures for 2021. Overnight, that changed. All of it changed. All of our detailed data reports, it's all off the board. So we continue to look at ways that we might be able to address some of these revenue issues. And the truth is, is that nobody really knows how how this is going to work. If they find a vaccine, there are some thoughts that the the economy can come back stronger than ever in a couple of months. There are some people that think that this will take longer to come out of than the recession from 07, 08. Where I sit in that, I'm not sure. All I know is that I will continue to provide as much information as possible and rely upon everybody else to do our due diligence to to share. So one of the ways that we're looking at easing the information for 2021 from a revenues perspective is there has been significant discussion about the impact on our taxpayers and our stakeholders. Here is a sample email that was shared from a PASBO link associated with school board adminis, or school business administrators in Montgomery County going back and forth with Mr. Sultanic as far as ways that we can maybe change up some of our discount and our penalty periods. And so there are people that I respect that have been doing this for many, many years that are really, really shaking the trees to find out if we can change things and make these things softer. So for instance, question, can we extend the discount period from, for example, 60 days to 90 days? As it currently stands, this is set by state statute. Now, remember, that means that the legislature could give a one-time waiver for that if they wanted to, but we don't know if they will or not. Can a local school board adjust the discount provided? For example, offer a 3% discount? Yes, it's within the authority of the board, but there are concerns about doing that and how that might impact our cash flow. And of course, we're looking at installment periods as well. And again, the way that, as Mr. Subers said, this is the current answer at the time, and then there might be something that comes down in a couple of days that maybe changes some of these these answers. This is a snapshot in time of part of our ongoing conversations associated with the business administrators. So basically, the new norm isn't very solid at this point in time. Remember, 90 to 95% of our budget from an expenditure standpoint is typically fixed in some way, shape or form in that we know what the contracts are, we know what the benefits are, we know we have debt service, we know what the transportation costs are, and most of the other contracts, the repairs and maintenance, we know what they are. But our entire fixed world has been put upside down by the virus. And again, the prolonged shutdown will mean that this is unprecedented with little or no history for us to go on. These are some highlights that we're looking at, salaries and benefits, new legislation. We have been proposing, and I think doing a really good job from a board and an administrative perspective, of hammering out the needs of our school district from a personnel standpoint. That all got blown up midway through March. So now we have a new reality, which is looking at new versus true-up costs and what's our priority moving forward. A good example of the confusion is associated with you have to pay all of your your employees. Peasars, the the company, you know, the the department that talks about our retirement, immediately sent something out and said, well, now, school districts, you have to define, just because you're paying somebody doesn't mean that they're going to get credit for Peasars, as far as Peasars is concerned. So Peasars got all up in arms and sent out all these bulletins that said, you have to now figure out what you're going to do if you're going to pay people to sit at home and you're not going to have them, they're not going to be doing their jobs. That's not going to count. It's it's going to be not retirement-covered compensation versus retirement-covered compensation. Well, I don't know what happened, but over a weekend, we came back on Monday and Peasars sent a very nice letter saying, oh, we're sorry, don't worry about it, everything's fine. oh, we're sorry, don't worry about it, everything's fine. So those were typed, some of the things that we've been dealing with on almost a daily basis, and our roller coaster ride continues. Contractor costs, those are being legislated, and we're looking at what is essential versus not essential. That includes our ESCO, our turf fields, and our capital projects listing. Insurance costs, how do the insurance, how does the insurance industry react? We know that after some economic downturn in '07, '08, for instance, bonding became a big deal. But overall, the insurance industry wasn't really impacted. This does impact our insurance industry heavily. And so they don't know how they're going to react. But that's, and that might be, that might impact our expenditures in 2021, and we might have to adjust. Any debt service changes to our current schedule, delay or pay, that's not necessarily, has been talked about from a school district perspective, but we do know that our homeowners, such as myself, are listening carefully to the fact that we might be able to have, our mortgage company might say, skip a payment or two, and there won't be any penalty. Well, how does that work with us when we have debt service payments as well? Will we gain some sort of relief? Will that relief be, be something that we could take advantage of from a budgetary standpoint? Talk about operational costs in general, supply chain issues, even something as simple as our supply bids, that we're supposed to be approving and sending out in April and May for next year. What if we order those things? What if we come back, we order them, and the supply chain still hasn't caught up to that? Ongoing business operations concerns for all industry not called medical, and technology, and the impact overall on our ability to predict where we'll be with our budget for 2021. Okay, that was a lot to take in. I'm sorry, it's kind of all over the place. But I tried to streamline it as much as possible. So any questions on 2021? We have a budget presentation next week. There'll be more in-depth. We'll have a projection on where we think we'll end up this year, and actual numbers to chew up. And we'll start getting work on revising our 2021 budget presentation. Okay. So as far as the state audit, the state audits move forward, there were two findings. One was a negative finding in that some of the private schools and charter school transportation students, there were a couple of students that were missed over a four-year period. And so that, that will hurt us to the tune of $50,820, as it was moved forward with. Finding, the first finding dealt with the number of bus runs, and we're happy to report that we discovered that we under-applied for our subsidy. So we found in particular, one, one particular year, there were several buses that were missed. With the results of the state audit, they will be paying us $332,155 for those buses. So the net result to the state audit is a positive $281,335. In addition to the normal subsidies that we receive, we do not know when that will be received. But that is the positive to come out of this. We do have correction, corrective action plans in place for both of these items moving forward as well. Okay, as I've already mentioned several times, for our capital projects, we're trying to define what our three-pronged project is, associated with ESCO 3.0 Part II. Just a note, in general, as far as our funding options go, I just threw this note in here. We are still on hold for our bond issue that we were scheduled to go, our Series A of 2020. Market volatility makes it basically impossible for us to go out into the market, marketplace at this point in time. We do have, it's unprecedented times. There has been no bond, municipal bond issues for three weeks in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It's almost unheard of. We continue to take guidance from Jamie Doyle and PFM on that. We continue to look at our capital project fund balances. Those are available. Those are not impacted. Those are currently in our coffers. Unfortunately, they won't be earning the interest rates that we had hoped for, but those are our real dollars for us to consider. And again, we have the unassigned general fund balance. How will our reaction to COVID-19 impact our financial operations? And we don't know. It's a good thing we do have unassigned general fund balance. Some school districts don't have that option. So our financial, our financial plan was very sound. We were working it to the T and could not have predicted this. So we'll all be in this together and move forward. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Moving on to Section 5.02 on grants and donations. In accordance with Policy 702, we had a grant for $30,000, which has been brought up a few times tonight. Incredible. Thank you to the foundation. We also had an $11,609 donation to the PowerPacks. Again, another incredible donation. Thank you very much. Section 5.03, it would be motion to approve the amendment to synergy student information system payment schedule to align with the software renewal cycle. Any questions? Can we move that to consent, please? 5.04, motion to approve the purchase of new backup and disaster recovery solution VIM to enhance the district's cybersecurity measure at a cost not to exceed $12,906.40 for year one. Any questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent. 5.05, be a motion to approve the purchase of 200 licenses for carbon black cloud to deliver next generation endpoint protection and enhance the district's cybersecurity measure at a cost not to exceed $6,352 for year one. Any questions? Okay, move that to consent, please. 5.06, the motion to accept and approve the findings from the state auditors as presented by the Assistant to the Superintendent for Business Administration, and to agree on the corrective action plan specifically designed by administration to address these issues. Any questions? Okay, we can move that to consent. 5.07, it's a motion to ratify the allocation of Safe Schools Grant Part A awarded by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to purchase emergency evacuation chairs and security camera system upgrades in the amount of $45,000. Any questions? Okay, if we can move to consent, and this ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. We'll now move on to Section 6 on the payment of bills. Dr. Weston.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 6.01, the ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments. The list of bills for March 2020 is attached. We will take action on this item next week at the April 13 meeting. And Item 6.02, the approval of the Treasurer's Report and Financial Statements, these will be provided ahead of next week's meeting, and this is also planned for action at the April 13 meeting. That will conclude Section 6.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Mrs. Evans-Brockett, professional personnel, Section 7.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. All items under professional personnel are on consent. So if there are no questions, that ends that section.
Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to Section 8 on support personnel. Mrs. Roberts.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. All items under Section 8 are on consent. And if there are no questions, we can move on to the next section.
Okay, hearing no questions, we'll move on to Section 9. Thank you, Mrs. Roberts. Dr. Halles, governance, please.
Thank you. Item 9.01 is a motion to hold a second reading and adopt the following policies. 112, school counseling, 117, homebound instruction, 118, independent study, 123.1, academic eligibility for extracurricular activities, 151, diversity policy, 222, tobacco and nicotine, title change to tobacco and vaping products, 225, students and the police, 227, controlled substances and paraphernalia, and 246, school wellness, 323, tobacco and nicotine, title change to tobacco and vaping products, 707, use of buildings, grounds, and facilities, 805.2, school security personnel, and 904, tobacco and nicotine use. If no one has any questions, should we move that to consent?
Yes, let's go ahead and put that one on consent.
Okay. And then Item 9.02 will be a motion to approve and adopt the attached resolution declaring May 2020 as a student loan month. And unless there's any questions, there ends my report.
Okay, so I'm not hearing any questions. Should we also put 9.02 on consent?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Halles. That brings us now to Section 10 on closing items. We'll start with Section 10.01, comments from the audience. And it looks like we have received three comments through the Q and A feature here. And I'll go ahead and share those. The first one is from a community member named Ruth. It says, is there a mechanism for families of high school students who do not need a Chromebook at home to return these unneeded Chromebooks so that they can be redistributed to families who do not need them? Second question is from a commenter, Steven. I have a second grader and a kindergartner. Prior to COVID, cyber schooling or homeschooling would, still would consist of a healthy and structured learning plan. COVID has effectively mandated a conversion of their education to a combination of homeschooling and cyber school. Yet what the kids are getting from the school is essentially a handful of minutes for a handful of subjects and a small handful of worksheets. How is the school making sure they're not losing ground in their academic development? Why isn't what we're seeing more akin to what cyber school or homeschooling should consist of in intensity and rigor? Interactive platforms should make this very feasible. Thank you from Steven. And I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly. Good day from Schweinfeld. And can I scroll down? Here we go. Okay, and the third comment is from Kyle. It says, this is Kyle Schreif from Skidback Township. I'm a ninth grader in PVHS, and I was wondering if finals for all classes will be online, or is it just canceled? So thank you to our commenters. We'll move to Section 10.02, comments from board members. So I'll start, you know, Dr. Russell, do you have, have any decisions been made about how finals will be conducted this year?
Yes, the recommendation is to cancel them all. And the high school administration, if that has not been communicated yet with parents, will do so very soon. But they did decide toward the end of last week to confirm that all final exams for high school students will be canceled.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Russell. Oh, there, okay.
Hi, Kim Mears. I was wondering why we're not looking at possibly extending the school year? And we're going to stick with the timeline that was originally set at the beginning of the year.
At this, I'm sorry, Mrs. Lofton, at this point, we are not certain that, first of all, we'll be able to get back into our setting in the way that we typically attend school. And also, we are planning for some summer experiences that would be a little bit more small group instruction in their organization. And we believe we could be more effective with students by bringing them in during a summer program as opposed to extending the school year for two weeks into June. So right now, that's administration's recommendation not to extend the school year as the school year we know it, but instead to move into summer programming and really focus, target the needs on the part of our students who may not have made the progress we would have otherwise expected during the spring of this year.
So if I may, I'm going to just add a fourth comment that come in through the Q and A, and it was from Gretchen Columbo, who asked, if graduation is postponed, would it be rescheduled in the stadium? So I just want to make sure that comment is also part of our record. Dr. Russell, I have a question for you. I'm aware of some schools, and particularly some colleges, have moved to a pass/fail option for classes that are offered this spring. And I'm curious if that's something that's been considered at our secondary level and where we are with our thinking on that.
We have been engaging our, particularly our secondary admin, in conversations about grading, and really trying to be comprehensive in our approach to what would serve our students the best and what would be fair, considering the circumstances. They have talked about pass/fail. They've also talked about a grading system that involves weighting the marking periods differently. First, second, and third marking periods would carry 30% of the final grade, fourth marking period 10%. They would still assign grades to students, students for the work that they complete. There, there hasn't been a recommendation brought forward to Mrs. Smith and I yet. We are waiting that. We did have some further conversation today with the goal that we would be able to communicate to our community after the spring break and let them know. Different schools in the county are doing some different things. However, most high schools have maintained the letter grading system and changed that weighting of their marking periods. Middle schools are somewhat divided. Some have shifted to a pass/fail. Some have maintained the grades, A, B, C, D. While at the elementary, what we have talked about is not continuing with our standard-based report card as we know it, the 1, 2, 3, 4s, if you will, and instead, providing our parents with a narrative, a summary of how our students do in the area of ELA and mathematics this last trimester. Still engaging in those conversations. We will have a final recommendation after spring break, and we'll share that with the public as well.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. I'm not hearing any further comments. So we'll move to Section 10.3 on adjournment. Before we adjourn, I do want to announce that we will be having an executive session after the meeting. On what? Is Personnel and Legal. We will have an executive session following the meeting on Personnel and Legal. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe, stay home as much as you're able to. And if you are celebrating a holiday over spring break, I hope that is enjoyable. Have a good evening, everyone.